Good evening colleagues. Welcome to the February 24, 2014 Prince George's County Board of Education Fiscal Year 2015 Budget Work Session. As always before we begin, a reminder to turn your cell phones off or put them on vibrate as we are taping the meeting. Ms. Jackson, would you be so kind as to call the row?
Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Eubanks?
Here.
Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Ms. Jacobs?
Dr. Kaufman?
Ms. Monday?
Mr. Valentine?
Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
I'm here.
Ms. Muse Orio?
Here.
Ms. Boston?
Here.
Dr. Eubanks? Thank you.
Thank you. All right colleagues, before we begin this evening, I have so, the news I have is so exciting that I'm gonna repeat it twice because I'm gonna do it again tomorrow at the board meeting. But one of the really important tasks of the board we felt was to bring some top notch executive leadership to the board to help us to more effectively reach out to the community, to help to continue to grow and foster communications with our colleagues in administration, to help ensure that we develop a robust and meaningful student centered policy agenda, and of course to be sure that we continue to stay laser focused on our fiscal responsibilities of developing and supporting an efficient operating system here in Prince George's County. So to do all of those things is our new executive director, Ms. Erica Berry. Welcome Erica.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. First and foremost, I just want to thank you for welcoming to the Prince George's County system. I'm really excited with working with all of you, especially the board members, but with everyone here in the system and Dr. Maxwell, to definitely further the education and improve our system and really make sure that our students are graduating college and career ready. So, I'm ready. Thanks.
Wonderful. And save some of that speech because again, you're gonna say it again tomorrow when we have a nice full house for our official meeting. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Berry. All right folks, the Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose to discuss the Fiscal Year 2015 Proposed Operating Budget. In accordance with Board Policy 3130, the Board of Education of Prince George's County establishes and maintains fiscal oversight and control of funds entrusted to the Prince George's County Public School System. In so doing, the Board of Education adopts balanced budgets establishing annual budget appropriations, operating and capital, and special grants that are the basis for the operation of the school system. The primary purpose of the Board's Budget Work Session is to fine tune the proposed budget submitted by our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Kevin Maxwell, to assure it meets our highest priorities and represents the best financial plan that will serve our students and staff in our school system, with our primary focus to advance student achievement. Today's Budget Work Session will be the final work session for this budget cycle. Concluding the Budget Work Session, the Board will host the last of three public hearings to receive public commentary to provide an opportunity for the community to share their budget suggestions and priorities for the 2014-15 school year. So again, our primary agenda item is our budget discussion. And tonight, Dr. Maxwell and members of the administration will provide a brief budget presentation. And in response to questions and comments members of the Board submitted in regards to the 2015 proposed budget, and then we will have discussion. So I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for a brief overview.
So thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the Board. Mr. Sheeran is gonna lead us into discussion of our operating budget tonight. This is, you know, the focus of the presentation and we will commence, I guess, with that. Mr. Sheeran?
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Good evening, Board Members. As Dr. Maxwell mentioned a second ago, we do have a brief presentation. I think you'll enjoy this information. We've taken a little bit different, a little bit different slant on it. Even though we will be going through some numbers, I think this new orientation will be pretty useful. So again, here we start with our great by choice presentation for the operating budget for FY15. Maybe? Here we go. We, in terms of our catchphrase, great by choice, in order to achieve greatness, the building blocks, of course, are we're trying to expand choice through the different budget options. We want to enhance our student supports. And of course, all of this is tied towards raising expectations so that our students, again, can become college and career ready. This first slide, as you can see, are raising expectations. You can see that we have some descriptors on the left. We have a cost, the FTEs that are associated with it. And then we have another column here for the number of students that are impacted. You can see the AP testing. We have $1.7 million associated with that. Looking at some of our past data approximately, that's the number of students that we think will be served. Also note that some students will take more than one test. As far as PSAT and SAT testing, again, we have $359,000 associated. Should impact about 18,000 students. Again, in order to make sure that our employees, particularly our teaching staff, can be retained as well as attract new employees to the school system. We have some reserves set aside. Nothing specific other than a total that will be used for the overall collective bargaining process. We also have about $2.8 million associated with our peer assistance review program we're implementing. And then again, another $2 million for our teacher evaluation system to be brought online. And then again, dual enrollment, we have about half a million dollars. And that should impact about 1,000 students. And that's pretty much based on the average tuition of about $500 per student that we think will be affected. The next slide, enhancing student support. You can see where we have program expansions on the left with dual enrollment. Also some primary years program and the middle years program, which very much is associated with the continuity of the IB program. We also have reading specialists, 20 FTEs, about $1.9 million. You can see the number of students that are being affected on that, on the far column, which is pretty impressive. We also, we're expanding our school counseling program. Another 17 FTEs added there, 1.4, almost a million, 1.5 million dollars. Also some curriculum writing, some technology funds, our math engineering and science achievement program, art teachers and music teachers. Again, that's 5.5 million affecting a great number of students, over 100,000. More program expansions, including our foreign language teachers. You can see we have 800,000 allocated for 10. In fact, students effectively about 1,500. A large number there, over $8 million for classroom size balancing with 100 FTEs. As we've talked in the past, that will give the instructional administration the ability to very much focus in on specific schools, making sure that the different classrooms across the district have the teaching instructional staff support that they need there. We also are including mentor teachers. These teachers, of course, will rotate from different schools and different classrooms, work with teachers to improve instruction. Another $1.8 million for our turnaround program. About 17 teachers there. We have some funds for the scholastic math inventory, 400,000, affecting a good portion of our student population. You can see some funds there for credit recovery and also parent liaisons, 61 added there. In keeping with the overall budget theme of expanding choice, we see on this slide funds allocated for the International Baccalaureate Program, funds for talented and gifted in terms of expansion. We also have the expansion of our Montessori and French immersion, resources for homeland security, secondary school reform, three and a half, almost three and a half million dollars there affecting over 6,000 students. Academy of Health Science resources as well as the seed school. That grouping alone is 7.3 million dollars. 54 FTEs would support that, as well as a sizable new seats that would be, new program, new seats for students over 8,000. And then the latter part of that slide, you can see where we have funds for our AVID, and we have funds for the William Smith Center as well as the fine arts and dance and art integration. 1.7 million, 13 FTEs, and another good volume of students that are impacted, over 61,000. Another slide, this one for another whole program expansion. You can see the cost for our STEM program. Four FTEs. These again would be students at middle schools with each teacher servicing approximately 62 students. Again, right below that, another high priority, our pre-K expansion. About $3.1 million associated with that. 46 FTEs. Again, each classroom would hold roughly 20 students with a teacher and a pair of professional. We also have funds on this slide associated with our creative and performing arts. Our immersion programs, both Chinese and Spanish, and funds for career tech ed. Again, 6.2 million dollars, 79 FTEs associated with that, with those expansions. Another part of our budget is our student based budgeting program. And you can see here some, a good slide that speaks to how that program has evolved from FY14 to next year in terms of, not only the base weight, but in terms of the grade weight and achievement weights, weights for ESOL. You can see how they're changing the first base weight, going up just by about $2 million. And you can see some slight variation. The achievement is going up by, right below $3 million. ESOL, fairly constant. Our small school allocation is increasing dramatically to make sure that all students, whatever the school size they attend, are all treated in an equitable manner. Funds for farms are included. And then you'll notice that there's a change on the formula in terms of capping the impact of SBB on individual schools so that as the enrollment goes through the formula and each school would get their allocation. The instructional administrators are very, very concerned to make sure that no one school loses or gains in any kind of a overly dramatic way. So this puts a little bit of a break on that, making sure that, again, we have equity in that component. And then, as you can see, the increase from 424 million to 429 million, substantial increase in FY15. This page is a summarized page, one that you've seen on previous slides. It basically summarizes the things I just talked about in the preceding several slides with a lot of the descriptors on the left. You can see what was in the original, what the change has been. With the addition of the additional revenues, we've gained another $47 million, making the total improvements for FY15 at 113.4 million. Again, this slide is not new. And it does a good job of summarizing all of the excellent programs that are being instituted or expanded next year. This slide is a little bit different. The last time, the last time we had the increase of the $47 million, it was very short on the heels of our last budget work session and we really didn't have enough time to actually run the individual program costs through the different categories. This slide now shows how the $47 million is split by the different state mandated categories. You can see that we have the admin mid-level, instructional salaries, textbooks and so forth. Very straightforward slide, what we had originally, what the change is, and what the new amended proposed total looks like. Again, the spending plan of $1.8 billion. This also is a slide that's familiar. It provides the revenue sources. Again, the change between what was originally proposed, what the adjustments have been, and now how they balance back to the overall summary totals for the budget for consideration. You can see federal sources, state sources, board sources. 102 million, 102.8 million for federal sources. State at $1 billion, 726,594. Board sources, again, 18.4 million. County sources at 636.2 million. Fund balance use planned at 43 million. And overall increase of 113.4 million dollars. That concludes the presentation. Appreciate the opportunity to provide that information to you. My team stands ready to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Sheeran, for that great and thorough presentation. Quite a bit, again, we've been working on this for a long time, but we should have plenty of comments. So we will open the floor to comments and suggestions. I will start a list. I have Ms. Epps first.
Thank you. Just, oh. Mr. Sheeran, I just want to first and foremost say thank you for...
Yeah, a little louder. A little louder.
Can you hear me now? So I was just saying, Mr. Sheeran, I just wanted to extend my, you know, my compliments to you and your staff for providing, you know, so much information and for working with the Board, particularly, you know, the new members of the Board so that we can, you know, hit the ground running because a lot of people came in and we were in the process of, you know, receiving the budget. And it's, budgets are, you know, oftentimes it's said that budgets are priority lists. And so what I think oftentimes public responds to is what they, the message that they feel that they're receiving from an entity that, you know, based on what's being proposed in the budget. And of course, we're gonna be hearing a lot of requests from different parts of the county in regard to all of that. I guess, whereas, you know, so I'm looking at Slide 10 and the first thing that kind of jumps out at me, not even so much to suggest that anything needs to be done, but one of the things that we have to do as Board Members is respond to the public's reaction to said priority document, right? So if I were, if I were responding to an inquiry about seemingly what at least seems to be listed here as a decrease in terms of textbooks and instructional materials, how would, how would, how would I help the public understand what the priority is with regard to that area, you know, in 14 as well as, you know, kind of a plan moving forward?
And that's a good, very good question. When the different program initiatives get allocated on a functional basis, a lot of times what that means is, is that even though the program might look like it's increasing to deliver a particular service, when you start actually breaking that down into the definitional requirements of how the money will be used, it ends up meaning that, in that particular category for textbooks, the amount of money that the district needs to deliver the services for that specific function have actually declined. It doesn't really mean that, that, that the quality of the service that the school system is delivering to students relative to the amount or the volume of textbooks is negatively impacted. It could be something as simple as the amount of dollars for lease purchase of textbooks is declining. Meaning, you know, when we, and not only are textbooks a category, but like school buses, different kinds of capital assets that we will buy in order to supply the schools, whether it's with buses to take the children from and to school, or materials of instruction or textbooks. It may very well be the case that we've had enough resources to pay off part of the lease purchase obligations, in effect freeing up some resources that otherwise would have to go to pay debt. And so that's why it can be a little misleading when you see a negative number, but it's almost you have to read a little bit, a little bit between the lines, so to speak, to get a better sense of what that actually means.
Right. Because, I mean, one of the things that we're hearing, you know, if you're reading in terms of like the textbook industry, obviously costs seem to be going up in that regard. And then, of course, there's, I guess, another part of the discussion that then talks about technology, you know, tech based materials and that kind of thing. And so I'm just trying to, I'm still trying to work out in my head how to help someone understand that because what they're getting from, you know, like the broader media is just the increase in cost for instructional materials. And then, not to mention that on the ground in their particular school, they may see, you know, outdated books or books that haven't, you know, that have reached their limit or, you know, or like I said, that they're outdated, or that they're not receiving kind of the media, the tech solutions for some of the, for some of the instructional materials, particularly when compared to, you know, other jurisdictions.
I could also, I could also tell you, I would also say this to each and every Board Member. As you visit schools, and this category is a particularly interesting one to me because, you know, I hear, not only in this school system, but I've worked in five different school districts. And invariably, I hear the story that schools do not have enough supplies, whether it be construction paper or glue or crayons or any kind of materials like that. I can assure, I can assure everyone that's listening to this presentation that this school system has adequate resources for materials of instruction for our students in classrooms. If for some reason there's something in the pipeline that is bogging that down, that's part of our administrative job to get that straightened and cleared up. So that's just, that's just point one. Point two, another, you know, another reason why some of those revisions can happen in that, in those functional categories, you know, it could very well be a case where there might be some computer licensing for different types of applications we have out there that could be categorized in that function and are now being no longer needed or at the same support level. So I just thought I'd mention that to you all.
And if I could just also add, you know, that these, I don't want people to misunderstand. It's not like we made this number up. These come from requests for, you know, like whatever groups of textbooks are in the cycle and how many they need. And that can vary from year to year. This represents about a 4%, you know, variation from last year's money to this year's money. And it's, you know, again, people tell us we need to buy this series this year and for whatever reason it may be a less series. We come to cycles and things. So I think I understand we're coming to, close to the end of getting all of our schools wired for wireless. And so there could be some offsets there as we, you know, cycle from that phase of installation into whatever comes next. So there are some natural variations and, you know, a million dollars when you sit up there, it looks like a huge amount of money. It's about 4% of this budget category. And that's still a lot, but at the same time, it's not out of the, you know, question for what normal variances may occur in your household budget or your home budget, or, you know, you refinance a house or whatever. I mean, different kinds of things have an effect on your household budget. The same thing can happen here. So if we didn't need quite as many textbooks in a particular area where the bid came in lower, you know, than last year's textbooks for a different class, I mean, that could all affect this budget. But this number came from people making requests of us in this area, in this category.
I'll send Ms. Epps. Thank you. Ms. Williams? Yes, I got you this time. Pushed your button nice and hard this time.
Yes, I did. My question is more about as we move forward from the budget planning and approval to actually implementing the budget. I think that, like my colleague mentioned earlier, this process has been a very welcoming and easy process compared to other budgets that I've been through. So I thank you all for all of your support. The one thing that I'm looking forward to hearing about more as we move forward is as we implement some of these line item things, who, when and where, and how are these things gonna be implemented? For example, if we're talking about, I guess, the math and science program, do we, how are we gonna start to monitor it? Not just on a spending basis, but on how it's impacting our students as a whole? If we're talking about increasing a budget a certain amount, and if we're talking about it's going to impact a certain number of students or we plan that it impacts a certain number of students, how are we going to be monitoring that side of the budget implementation process? And how are we, as the Board, going to be able to stay on top of it and monitor it and track the progress that comes about from this new 2014-2015 budget? So what I really would like to know better, and maybe this isn't the best place, but I'd like for it to be out there, how are we gonna start monitoring the actual impact and the student achievement on the students as we move this budget forward?
Thank you for that. And that is exactly the conversations that we're beginning to already have. We've noticed, coming back into the county, that we have a lot of great programs, but I'm not sure how well we've actually evaluated their effectiveness. So in this, since you mentioned STEM, the whole purpose of implementing the STEM in the middle schools and the two middle schools is hopefully to prepare those children for access into their high schools. And both high schools also have STEM programs. But what we plan to do through our research office is to monitor the student achievement, monitor the effectiveness of the programs, so you're right on target and we're beginning to have those conversations. We're in the infancy stages of those right now because we want to make sure that it's actually approved before we move forward. But Dr. Whitehead is already beginning to have some of those conversations.
I think, I think that is really key for us right now, especially for a lot of us newbies when we look to next year's budget. And then we can have a better conversation about whether or not we agree or disagree with the amount of funding based on what the actual outcome is of this. So I don't know if we can use, start to gather a baseline for today as we move forward and then do a comparison. Maybe the first year is not going to be the most accurate comparison, but at least we can sort of have a baseline and then compare that baseline... can sort of have a baseline, and, and then compare that baseline, the impact of the student, the student impact, that baseline for the student impact to next year when we start to look at the budget. The other question that I had was, if we could share, Mr. Sharon, maybe at a different timeline, a different time, when you talk about the base cap for the, the budget for schools, there was a positive for, a negative for base cap or something that was on your slide. If we could get a copy of how that looks like on the actual student-based budget equation, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Those, those different categories that are part of the formula, in the, in the, and that's really what they are, they're just elements of the formula. And so as you, as you increase the weight or the dollar value associated on a per-student basis, whether it be achievement or FARMs, which is, FARMs is pretty much is your poverty element, achievement or the basic weight, you will then, you'll get different, different dollar amounts that will be allocated towards those, those different components. So that would affect different schools in different ways based on what the spread of their enrollment would look like. And that's why when we get to some of the, you'll see that one large dollar amount for the, for the small schools, is that we want to make sure that if, if a school happens to have, not, not have the, the level of enrollment that it needs, it still has to provide a, a full instructional program, so you can see that there's extra, extra money there allocated for that. But as far as a, a more in-depth tutorial over how SBB works, I would be happy to set that up, and you and any other board member that would like to participate, we could, we could easily do that.
Definitely, I'd like to just learn more about that, and I appreciate the, the increase in the small school allocation. I think that for schools that are in the, the eighth and ninth district, or the southern part of the county, really appreciate that increase, so thank you.
All set? Okay, just to keep folks in the loop, we have Boston, Burrows, Anderson, Musaario, and Eubanks, so Ms. Boston, you're up.
I want to thank you also for the great work that you did putting this together. It's a really good budget and presentation that you did today. I have two questions. One was on Slide four, if you can put it back up there. It was on the FTEs, you listed FTEs in that slide. Slide four. Yeah, at the end where you, your grand total, you have zero, so are these existing FTEs, and they're just being moved from somewhere else, or are these all new FTEs, it's in the FTE column?
Oh, that is a formula error.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I just thought they might have already been on the book and you just did it.
Good eye, Ms. Boston, good eye.
Okay, no problem.
So fifty-two is the total?
Okay. On the slide, I didn't write down the page number, on your classroom sizing, the balance, what is that going to look like? What is the teacher-student ratio? Is that going to decrease that? Because I think right now we were at, it was a thirty, I believe? So is it, that going to, those new hundred FTEs are going to decrease that number?
Yeah.
Yeah. Would it decrease the, the teacher-student ratio?
It's to balance classes. We haven't had the ability to do that. It's to allow us at the beginning of the year, say, at some of the small schools that we have, where you might have, right now, allocated one first-grade teacher and the class size is thirty-five or thirty-six. We haven't had, you know, staff after we've opened school and the, and the, the enrollment has varied from our projections, to go in and fix a problem like that. So we've had to take a teacher out of some other school that was in less, you know, less concerning, you know, situation in order to lower that class size. So this gives us a hundred positions, which is about a half a position per school, it won't work out that way, but to fix the worst of the enrollment issues, the class size, enrollment issues. But it's not going to overall lower our, you know, classroom size, but it's going to help us fix those problems that we see at the beginning of the year where we have a couple of AP classes that are at forty-three or something, and we, we don't think that's, you know, the best way to be, so we may allocate a half a position to, to a school to lower that, you know, class size. So, that's purely, as it says, for balancing, to allow us, once school is open, to go back in and fix those things that didn't work out through the mathematical formula that we divvy up, you know, staff for, for projections.
So the, the rate, the elementary ratio, I think, is what, thirty or thirty?
Yeah, and I don't think with as many schools as we have, the hundred teachers are going to change that ratio dramatically, but it is going to make a profound effect where you take a...
When you get over to thirty, thirty.
Right, sure. So if it's thirty, you have one class of, you know, kindergartners at thirty, or you have two of fifteen. But right now, we don't have the luxury of going in if we end up with an extra fifteen kids that we didn't think we were going to have, you know, when we were laying out projections in the spring. We haven't had the luxury the last couple of years of going in and fixing that after school starts, and that's what this is set aside for, to give us a, a pool of teachers with which we can come in and intervene in those places that show up as binds in the schedule.
Well, great, I'm glad to see that you put something in the budget to look at that and reduce that, so...
Right, because I mean, we hear from parents all the time, oh, my class, my kid, your child's class size, and so, we've had nothing to really fix that with. When we started this school year, we've really had nothing. Next year, we'll have a hundred teachers that we can address that problem with.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
Good afternoon. Once again, thank you, Mr. Sharon, for your work. Also want to thank your staff in the back for all of their work and their dedication, especially, I believe it's ASA, ASASP Unit Three, hope I got that right. Oh yeah, please stand up if you, if you'd like, let's give you guys a round of applause.
Is that the people you were signing autographs for earlier?
Yeah, yeah. You know, I believe it's important to, you know, recognize them when it comes to, you know, raises and that sort of thing. But when, when it comes to the budget, I had a question, I guess maybe for Dr. Davis, probably for Dr. Davis. We talked about having the, the middle school and high school reading specialist locked. What was the, you said that you guys were going to take that back, think about it, and present a new answer to the board. What was that? The, the reading specialist, before elementary school was locked by middle school and high school?
My notes have that for FY15, we will unlock those positions, which will allow principals to purchase them, and in our budget, we have an additional twenty to allocate to schools based on their results, to determine which schools will get those twenty.
Right.
And, and speaking with the secondary reading department, when we consulted them, the reason why they still would like for that to be unlocked right now, is that they feel that sometimes they need more of a literacy specialist instead of a reading specialist at the secondary level, if that makes sense. So meaning that we really want to make sure that we are being literate in all of the subject areas, where it's more specified in elementary, where we need a reading specialist to help the students read. With Park, all content area teachers really need to understand reading strategies. So if we lock it just to a reading specialist, they felt that it may not meet the needs of all of the students in the other schools. They also indicated that some schools prefer having an ILT instead of a reading specialist, and once again, the ILT is helping with not only literacy, but also data, leading collaborative planning. And when you locked it to just a reading specialist position, they felt like they confined the schools too much. So that's why it's still unlocked for FY15.
Can you talk about an ILT more?
Right. ILT is an instructional lead teacher, and once again, usually that person, depending on the school, some schools choose to do a reading ILT, some schools choose to do a math, some schools have a STEM ILT, just depending on the needs of the school, but those ILTs, instructional lead teachers, also focus on literacy, but they also focus on data and collaborative planning. And they felt that that was much more of a broad position, broader position than just confining it to a reading specialist position that can meet the needs of the secondary schools.
Okay. And my second question, I see we have, so we had... We had several million dollars for parent liaisons, and we also had, have, close to six hundred thousand dollars for a family and consumer, family and community resource officer, office. We also have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for an ombudsman's office, and we also have, similar to that, for the constituent services office. So it seems like we have a lot going on in that arena, but they're all different, not really coordinated. I'm not sure if, what the logic is behind having, you know, essentially, one, two, three, four different type of community parent support operations. That's on page nine.
So in response to the board inquiries and the board questions about constituent services and how that was being used, and the need to do more, you know, community outreach, parent and community outreach, and the question of getting issues and concerns that people send to the school district, either through the board office, or through my office, or other offices, how to be more responsive as a district is something that we considered at the board's request. And so we believe that realigning the work of the constituent services office into a, community outreach, so both of those offices aren't going to coexist together, they're going to be, you know, I guess, adjusted into one office or absorbed into one office, and we're still working through the details of that. This alignment, this budget, is in response, again, to the board's kind of requests about that. The ombudsman office, you know, we, we have heard repeatedly from, from members of this board and from others, that the responsiveness is not always what it should be. And so creating an office of the ombudsman for Prince George County Public Schools, that all of these concerns, wherever they originate, come to this office and are tracked. The majority of those questions or concerns come through the schools, and so we made a decision to align that to the office of the deputy superintendent, since she oversees the operation of the schools, the principals, and, you know, the associate superintendents who oversee the schools as well. And so we felt like that was a place to make sure that if somebody wasn't being responsive, the person who oversees that area is, is aware of that as opposed to it, you know, sitting out here somewhere else. So, it's a, it's a, and the parental liaisons as well, we've heard a great deal about our ability to communicate with, with parents, and, you know, there was obviously a lot of consternation, I think, when those positions were first reduced in, in Prince George County, and so, you know, we have, you know, tried to invest our resources and our time in organizing ourselves around a better way to do community outreach and to resolve concerns or questions that people have through what will be two offices. One, an ombudsman office that will resolve concerns and be responsive, and the other is to arrange ourselves around parent and community outreach.
Okay, and so the difference between the constituent services office and the family and community resource office, those two will actually be combined?
Yes. They'll be realigned into that office.
Okay, and that's going to fall under the ombudsman?
No.
Okay.
The ombudsman is going to be a separate thing, it's going to handle concerns, resolve concerns that people have.
And then the family and community resource office, right now, will fall under the other deputy superintendent of academics?
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Not completely, but we'll talk offline.
Okay, so when you have something like we have right now with Common Core and Park assessments, all of that stuff's going to fall under the deputy superintendent for academics. And so that's a big interest of parents right now, you know, what does Common Core, what does it look like, what does it mean to my child, right? And so, the office that's going to be doing the outreach to parents is going to fall under that area where all those resources lie in the district to get that communication out to parents.
Okay.
All set? Dr. Anderson?
Dr. Maxwell, Mr. Sharon and staff, I do want to commend you on the quality of the budget, and with what appears to be significant efforts in terms of assigning funds for activities to enhance the achievement and get our students' career in college ready. I am just a little concerned, I want to thank you first for increasing the budget for the double basics, you know, recognizing that that is associated with special activities. But I do think that that is a very, very serious part of our budget that needs to be addressed fully, and perhaps more fully in the future. I'm happy for where we are now, but I'm looking at this as a first effort. I think there's a real need for a comprehensive program for, for these students, not only the doubles, but the singles too, because I think in focusing on them, we'll, we'll make strides in, in removing the, the big gaps that exist, achievement gaps that exist. So while I want to commend you, I want, I want, I want you to know that I'm going to be looking for a comprehensive program to address these groups of students. I think it's critical for us to do so, but thank you very much for the first effort.
You're welcome, and we, we, we share that concern, we want to make sure we get to where we need to be, we have the ability within budget categories, make some adjustments going forward if we need to. We, we will be, you know, talking with principals after we make these allocations and ask them, you know, what kind of other things, as we, again, talk about a comprehensive way to address this. But, but we, we understand, we want to reduce the gaps and, and be great by choice as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Musaario?
Hello, everybody. When I'm looking at the budget and the, the locked, I mean, unlocked and locked positions on guidance counselors, and when it comes to high schools, it's based on the student budget, I just had a question. Since we're trying to strive to be college and career, we have more college and career-ready students, wouldn't it be better for us to set the standard, to have locked positions in high schools, so you can have, rather than having three hundred and forty students to one guidance counselor, when you look at, and that doesn't effectively reach out to all the students and students who fall through the cracks? So I was wondering if this position can be locked? And when you're looking at American School of, American Association of School Guidance Counselors, they said, they say to achieve program, maximum program effective, effectiveness, it's best to have a ratio of two hundred and fifty students to one guidance counselor. So that is a big difference when you see what's going, going currently, and what is the norm that is being set?
I'd like to just provide a brief response. It's unlocked to allow principals the ability to add additional professional school counselors if they so choose, to help reduce the student to professional school counselor ratio. Just so you know, we haven't had any high schools thus far who have reduced the number of professional school counselors, they've only increased.
Okay. So, can I get a more understanding of the, the positions being locked for specialty programs like science and tech, or IB, or performing arts? What, why is there a difference in being...
Sure, we'll send you a list of all the locked positions and unlocked.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I'm going to do a quick follow-up for Ms. Musaario, though. So, no schools have chosen to reduce guidance counselors, but under SPP, they could if they want?
And let me add to that, I said high schools, because there, there were some elementary schools that chose to reduce or get rid of, but I want to clarify, I'm only speaking of high schools.
No, but I'm, I'm clear, but under current rules, no high school has chosen, but they could if they want, under, under current rules, correct?
Correct, but it has to be approved by their instructional director, which typically, that would be a red flag for us if we saw that they wanted to reduce, and then they have to create a plan on what they would do with the reduction, so typically, they don't.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, that, that didn't count against my time, that was... You see with the button there? All right, all right, I'm next. I want to actually follow up on this issue around, around parent engagement as well, and number one, just express just how happy I am about the responsiveness that the, that the administration has made, and our work to work to kind of really collaborate. When the board took a look at, at ideas we had, we had a whole bunch of them, and we shared a lot of them with you, but a couple that we had clear consensus around that, that we gave you, is we wanted more money in the budget for professional development, staffing, leadership, and resources to create a... leadership and resources to create a culture of support and assistance for parents that can make immediate changes on how parents experience our systems when they come to get us, to get their issues resolved. And so we asked for your specific recommendations for programmatic changes for that. And we also asked that we fund a comprehensive research project to do focus groups of parents, teachers and administrators and a comprehensive survey of parents and citizens, including parents with school-aged children in the system and those who've chose not to send their children to the system, about what they think about, about our system and what they can do to be more engaged. So you talked a little bit in Mr. Burrows' response about your response to that, but I wonder if you can really talk about how, how you see us working together to move that agenda forward.
I think our work together on this has been exemplary so far. You know, there've been a lot of questions posed and we have, you know, tried our best, I mean, there's a, a certain bottom line that's there, we've made some adjustments within that bottom line to try to be responsive to that, there's not enough money to do absolutely everything. I mean, to, to the question about counselors, for example, and the recommended ratio by the counselor organization, we know that we're below that, we're also below the recommended mentor teacher ratio that the state put out when they went to three-year tenure and, and, you know, there just isn't enough money to do all of the things that we might like to do, and I'd like to do all of those. But to this specific point, we understand the interest in this area, we agree wholeheartedly that we have to do a better job reaching out to current parents and to potential parents, both those that have made other options and those whose children are not yet in school. We've had them at several of our budget hearings and workshops who have children who are just before entry level and they're interested in what we're doing that is going to make them interested in making Prince George's County Public Schools their choice rather than some other option they may be considering. And so we've also heard over time, you know, concerns about the responsiveness to concerns that get leveled, you know, with the school system, and so trying to separate out those functions and make sure they're aligned appropriately within the organization has been something that we've, you know, made a priority. So, so taking in and creating an office of parent, you know, and community development, I don't think that's quite the name we settled on, community parent, what's the name, what, what's the, what did we settle on?
Family and community outreach.
Family and community outreach. We changed that to what? Resource.
We did.
Well, see, there've been like four iterations of this, so that's why I was asking the question, now I've gotten two since I asked the question.
That was my oversight, it actually does say resource.
Okay, so, so we, we know that reaching out to our parents and trying to educate them about our system and about changes that are taking place, again, as I mentioned earlier, Common Core and Park are a couple of good examples, but also the specialty programs that we have, the opportunities for them, how all of that works, just how our system in general operates is really important, how you access information from different departments. All of these things are really, really important, and so trying to make sure that we're responsive. There are, you know, 14 board members and there are interests across the district, so how do we, how do we align our work together, right? Because when, when each of you wants to have a community meeting and you all want to have our staff, and if you all want them on the same night, I don't have that many people. So, so what we hope is that there'll be a lot of collaboration and we can spend some time talking about what are the priorities for this coming school year. Ms. Boston, you know, did a county-wide program on the dual enrollment option that the state just passed in law last year that a lot of parents were interested in, and it was a very, very good turnout. And so, you know, what are those topics for next year? I mean, that's something that we would love to engage with the board and hear your thoughts on. And then let's talk about a strategy for wisely using our mutual resources together to make sure that we, you know, deliver that. In terms of the communication with parents who aren't here yet, I mean, we know, we know who lives in the county, I mean, we have, we have a lot of information available to us, but we don't, we haven't in the past, you know, reached out to parents of two and three-year-olds whose kids are in some other daycare program somewhere, and, and we can get that information, we can send mailers out, they don't have to be, you know, glossy, you know, 16-page, you know, papers, we, we can reach out to folks. So we, we, and we want to be, so, so anyway, so we're, we're going to, you know, work with you and, and develop priorities together and collaborate on making sure we, we do what we need to do as a system to be great by choice. Thank you, it belongs to Jim Collins, it's trademark, but we have permission to use it.
I also just.
I'm on chapter three, by the way.
I also just wanted to.
You're going to love chapter four too.
I just wanted to add to that, we also added in $100,000 in the Board of Ed line item as well as for the family community resource office, so that we can show that collaboration process and trying to create the surveys that staff has talked about to be responsive to the needs of parents.
Thank you, and I, I'll just say for one how much I love this concept of, of us bringing in an ombudsman. I put it up on Wikipedia, an ombudsman or public advocate is usually appointed by the authority, but with significant degree of independence, who is charged with representing the interests of the public by investigating and addressing complaints of maladministration or violation of rights. So really having that independent voice of parents and communities listening to, with us every day, and really, you know, we have talked so much about the fact that even those of us who are parents ourselves, and we know we speak for and love our parents and our, and our children very much, but having that voice, that independent voice, I think, is going to make a big difference in making sure that we keep our eyes squarely on the prize, which is the needs of our parents and our students. So thank you, that's, that was a great recommendation, I'm happy about that, thank you. Ms. Higgins.
Thank you very much. I want to echo the comments of my colleagues about all the wonderful work that's been done in regards to the budget and the responsiveness of, of the questions. I do have one about a pending in regards to the actual performance fiscal year 13 performance indicators. Early in the budget is the list of the fiscal year 13 and the fiscal year 17 targets, and I see on the document that providing the actual fiscal year 13 performance indicators is pending, are we going to be able to get that before tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am, you'll have it sometime either tonight or early tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then is this going to be added in the, the, the budget document? To me, frankly, to me, it, it looks that we don't know that fiscal year 13 is passed. If in our budget document we have fiscal year 13 targets and fiscal year 17 targets and we don't have 15 fiscal year 13 actuals, so I would just encourage that, that you look into that. Yeah. Unless we want to drop off 13, in which case we would have just 17 targets, but if you're going to put. Yeah, so anyway, I, I, if we're going to put the 13 targets in, my suggestion is, is to put the 13 actuals in, so everybody knows we know that it passed.
No problem.
But I would like to see them as well. Thank you. And in regards to the high schools, I remember the years from several years ago that we did have to have professional school counselors in order for a high school to be certified. And I thought pull, they pulled that up from Maryland State Reg's Comar, so that's probably also why we haven't reduced any of our school counselors. Okay. The governor's budget provided an additional $47 million, where did that money come from? Do you know? I know it came from the governor, but I'm sorry, what? Yes, but.
The, the lion's share of it was, was a result of decline in the wealth of Prince George's County.
I'm sorry, the what?
The decline in wealth.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
So Maryland, the state of Maryland has an inverse.
Yes.
Funding formula, the higher the poverty, the greater funding you get from the state.
Right.
The less poverty.
Yeah.
The less.
And, and we are seen as more wealthy because we have TIFs too, not anymore?
Not anymore.
Okay, great.
And so that, it's a, it's a formulaic thing, our poverty rate went up and so the formula gives us additional money.
Thanks. Page eight for student-based budgeting. And I heard Dr. Maxwell, you talk about how if there was, and maybe it's not in here, or where is the, the allocation to keep in reserve to help balance classrooms so we don't have to pull teachers in mid-year? I don't know if it's on eight or is it somewhere else?
It's on page eight.
It's on my page five, perhaps it's on Tom's page eight, but, but if you look at page five.
Oh, classroom size balancing.
It says classroom size balancing, 100 teachers.
Okay, thank you, that's a big help. And that is so critically important, so I really appreciate that. Were you going to say something, Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am, so it's actually two places. The, the normal SBB classroom balancing, that funding is actually on slide eight also, but the administration has seen that there's a need to right-size class size.
Yes.
And so the funding is on page five, that's the instructional administration's ability that after classroom balancing takes place, they'll be able to look to see, pinpoint, I need to add a teacher here, I need to do these types of staffing here to make sure that in FY 2015, the class size in our schools are as appropriate as we can possibly.
So we really will be able to then have maybe $10 million to kind of help right-size each classroom and impact the schools directly? Okay. Is that, good. Can you talk about how the program expansions, the Chinese immersion, the Spanish immersion, that list of, of program expansions, how does that fit with student-based budgeting?
I'm sorry, those schools get additional funding, so they'll get their regular base based on their students, but then they also get funding based on the additional program that's been added to their, to their building, just like specialty programs.
So what would that look like? Say, I think Caesar Chavez is now going to be a Spanish immersion, so what, or I think Paint Branch is a Chinese immersion, so what does that mean?
So their SBB would be the same based on their student enrollment, but they'll get additional funds and resources to pay for the materials at the grade K level to support the implementation of Spanish immersion. And remember, it starts at grade K first and it'll get phased in and we've set aside funds to take care of those resources as well.
Would they get more teachers then too?
They'll get teachers based on the number of students, and they're slated to get.
Three.
Three additional teachers for Caesar Chavez. Correct.
Ms. Higgins, I think it just depends on the program, so if we take a look at, for instance, I'll go back to the STEM program expansion that we're doing in middle school. So for next year, those middle school, Oxon Hill and Thomas Johnson, if approved, they would get a STEM coordinator as well as one additional teacher for next year. When we take a look at IB, for instance, because IB has basically a year-long process of application, the only thing that the IB schools are going to get as far as personnel is an IB coordinator next year because the program will not actually be implemented in FY 15, so you really have to go program by program in order to understand the additional personnel, the professional development funds, as well as resources.
Okay.
And there's a training, and there's a training piece, it is, but each program has its own requirements. So IB has a certain training program, teachers must participate in, and there's a certification requirement, you don't just say, I want to teach IB and you get to be a certified school next year. They come and do site visits, they, they, you know, require certain amounts, again, of training and those kind of things, so there's a process that goes underway, but the coordinator will come right on board, we'll be filing applications once the budget's approved for all the schools, and we'll be in a position, I am quite certain, to be approved on the right timeline.
Good.
And just so you know, Ms. Higgins, in the February 7th response, it's program by program, the specific positions that will be added.
Thanks, I'll look at that again, thank you very much. And can you talk about, and I understand the, the small schools really have suffered and appreciate Ms. Williams for having brought that issue up, can you talk a little bit about the difference, the increase in $6 million and what that will do for the small schools? How many schools are considered small schools? And is, I know I'm asking several questions, but I'm worried about the buzzer. And is Academy Road, I'm sorry, Annapolis Road Academy or those special schools, are they considered a small school as well with their little population? Go ahead.
So Ms. Higgins, I couldn't tell you the actual list of the small schools, but the rationale behind it was basically through the classroom balancing process, we've seen for the last several years, that the first set of schools that we always take care of during that process are the small schools. So in order to give them a chance to strategically, to strategically plan for their upcoming year, like all the other schools, we deemed that it was important for us to provide these fundings for them upfront, so that they could have the same amount of time as the other schools that were being funded at a more traditional level, because they had more enrollment that actually brought in more dollars for them.
Well, I, I appreciate the issue, and I, I think it's a very real issue that they have less staff to do the same amount of work, so I think it's valuable, probably not by tonight or tomorrow morning, but it would be helpful to kind of see how that gets flushed out in terms of what initiatives you have. It certainly doesn't need to be before tomorrow. Yeah? Oh, good, okay.
On January 27th, number four lists the small schools, and I don't see Annapolis Road listed, as I look at them.
Well, maybe that would be something.
They're not Alpha, so it's making it more difficult.
I know their student population is fluid and very little and.
But anyway, all the small schools are listed there, and answer to question number four on page seven, on January 27th.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry to have not remembered that. And maybe look in terms of what the, what the definition of is Annapolis Road, and I think there are a couple of other specialty schools that certainly are small schools. I think, oh, and then on fiscal, on the page nine and 10 on the presentation? Okay.
So, so for example, at the elementary level, the threshold is 350, the size.
So I no, no, not only have to read it, I have to remember this.
Wow.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Middle school, 600, high school, 1,300.
Okay, thanks for your indulgence. And check out Academy Road, I think it's lower than that. On page nine and 10 on the budget, it might be helpful to have in another column that talks what the fiscal year 14 budget was on all of those items. I see where it's a change for the original CEOs and the revised, but maybe it would be helpful to have the fiscal year 14.
We, we can provide that spreadsheet.
Good, thank you. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You. I have Ms. Waller and then Ms. Jacobs for round one. Is anyone else?
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell, to, I'm sorry, Dr. Fewbanks. Dr. Maxwell and to the staff, we do express our appreciation for your assistance with the budget. Certainly, this has been a banner year for the board with the number of discussions that we've held in session as well as on Saturdays to go over all of our questions and inquiries and the emails and to ensure that we're getting responses back to our constituents. On page seven, and this sort of follows on a little bit with what our student board member brought up, we have career tech education. We talk about our students being college and career-ready, and I see that we're, we're, we are getting new seats of 326. Could you tell us a little bit about what we, the message and programs that we're going to be trying to get out to our students that are enrolled in career tech? I think sometimes we, we don't hear enough about it, and of course, we're still, you know, bringing our constituents on board with the new terminology because persons that may not have students in school, career technical education is different from vocational tech that they used to take many, many years ago. Thank you.
So these are additional seats in things like HVAC, masonry, electrical and construction design management.
So are we going to, what, are we going to have any new programs for our students in North County?
I'm not sure the school allocation, do you know? Hot Point?
Go ahead. They're at Hot Point, Parkdale, Potomac, Suitland, Forestville, actually, that's Homeland Security, I'm sorry, career and tech ed programs, Bladensburg High School, Bowie High School, Crossland High School and Suitland High School.
Okay, and so I think that along this with the guidance counselors, I think that we need to get our messaging out a little bit more about our career tech opportunities for our students. I know that we have great programs, but as I travel throughout the county, it seems like. like there's, you know, we're not getting the word out. And we need to start reaching our students between the eighth and the ninth grade, because that's when we're starting to lose our students with, because we're, we're stressing, we're talking about STEM, you know? And I think STEM and STEAM is important, but we need to talk about their other options that are going to be available. Thank you.
Officer, thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. My first question is about dual enrollment. So you talked a little bit about it already, Dr. Maxwell, but to, to the extent, page three, how much change, to the extent that last year, the legislation that passed, which essentially puts the burden, full burden, on the school district, how much of this change is related to that? And I see that there's an increase in new seats. Is that, I assume that's expansion, but how much of the increase in costs is associated with our, if any, new obligations under the new law?
So currently, in FY two thousand and fourteen, we have allocated fifty thousand dollars. But for FY fifteen, we're projecting that the cost is going to be close to a half a million, because it's-
Because of the change?
Yes, ma'am.
And because it's only been about a half a ye, of a year also, you know, it didn't take effect at the beginning of the school year.
That and the fact that I think we've done more outreach to parents to make them aware. I mean, through all of our high school guidance counselors. So we are anticipating that the enrollment will go up. I think we were under like only fifty children, less than fifty children for a semester. It increased a little bit this semester, but we're hoping through the parent engagement activity that we had in the fall, as well as the guidance counselors, that it will increase.
And then I guess to the extent that our secondary school reform initiatives will also change, I assume we're gonna go towards more dual enrollment opportunities for kids, which would also have more budget implications.
It, it will, if that's the result, absolutely. Where we're doing, you know, collaborations with the community college, this is, for example, I mean, which we've already done some of, and we're gonna do more, it's definitely gonna have an impact.
Okay. The other question I have is, in, in light of the, you know, the submission by MSTA or pending submission, if you will, for increase, for the ESEA waiver renewal, so race-to-the-top money is gone, essentially. What is the distinction between our turnaround schools and the priority schools under the sort of new umbrella? What, what does that look like for the district, and what is that gonna be? Okay, is that a-
Oh, no, it's okay. It's just they changed their terminology now four times, too. We just went through that with something else. So I'll turn that over to Dr. Davis.
Okay. I smile because that was a learning curve for me coming into the county. Because what I understand is that Prince George's County designated six schools as priority schools, and we changed that terminology this year to, for them to be turnaround schools. But the state has also designated priority schools. And it was just very, um, a little confusing. So are you talking about the state designation or our county?
I'm actually talking about the state designation.
Okay. So with the state designation of priority schools, I think we're up to about forty-some schools that are priority, forty-two, I believe, as of this year. I don't know how that will change next year, that are considered priority schools. And then depending on what category they are designated by the state, the county is asked to either provide resources or support to those schools.
Okay.
So ask me the question again, now that I know.
So that-
I apologize.
So basically, you know, some of the money even for turnaround schools, as I understand it, came from race-to-the-top.
Yes.
And it's gone. But for the most part.
Uh huh.
And then the priority schools, which still falls under the local, the LEAs' local requirements for the ESEA waiver, still requires the incentives, the changes in how we do work. So I'm just curious, as, are we gonna make them one? Are we gonna just change it to one? We're gonna use, are we gonna still use turnaround and priority?
We're still gonna use the two different terms.
And funding will be different based on both?
There'll be funding different, from what I understand, is that a lot of the SIG money also helped with the priority schools, whereas with our turnaround schools, really came for race-to-the-top.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm being clear or not.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay. And then, so the other question is for teacher evaluation and professional development. So, I mean, teachers still feel that they're, they don't get enough in terms of the changes that they have to do around Common Core. And I see it, I see it on page three, and I know we've had it in previous slides. I guess, can you just talk a little bit more about how professional development looks different now, based under Common Core requirements than it has in the past? If at all?
I'm not sure if it looks differently yet, as far as this year. I think that it will look differently next year. So prior to the lack of resources that the county has been, has been given, we used to do a lot more systemic professional development for our teachers. Unfortunately, that has waned away, and it's really been up to the building-level principals to provide professional development to the teachers, and that has varied. What we, what we're looking to do, and I'll ask Dr. Whitehead also to chime in, what we're looking to do is to bring back more of that systemic professional development, especially as we move into Common Core. And I will ask-
One of the things that we are going to bring back are summer institutes for our teachers, so that we can begin training where they can devote their full attention to learning the new skills that are required for Common Core. In addition to that, I think we made a great push with our professional development, using our professional development lead teachers. In every building, we had one for reading, one for mathematics. We've brought them out every month, we've trained them, and they in turn have gone back to their buildings to turnkey professional development. We've also trained every teacher leader, and the teacher leaders that I'm referring to are those that are department chairs over the content areas. So we've had a multi-pronged approach to providing support in our transition to Common Core. So starting next year, you will see that beefed up even more with the additional funding.
And then I guess, do you see any significant differences in grade level for teacher preparedness around Common Core? And others are some grades more prepared, or, I mean, do you, where is it?
Well, it's, it's not necessarily that some grades are more prepared than others. I think you will find, like, for example, in mathematics, the biggest shift occurs around grades four and five. So we began very early with grade five, giving professional development to those teachers around the new content that they previously hadn't taught in those grades. In reading, across the board, we've had to pay more attention to close read. Students rereading, giving evidence from the, from the text, which, you know, has not always been their favorite thing to do. So there are key things that we are working on in each content area that we've had to include as part of our professional development.
And just to quickly add, we still are, very quickly, 'cause I've gotten the cue that we're running out of time, but I just want to quickly add that we are still investigating, meaning that a team of approximately twenty is doing a push to hit all two hundred and five schools, just to take a look at the Common Core implementation. So we have a Google site that's set up, we're capturing our notes, because that's going to inform us on what the next steps of professional development needs to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Monday?
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Eubanks, I just had a quick question about slide three. Under rising, or raising expectations, on the second bullet, it has PSAT and SAT testing. I am interested in hearing, I'm not sure, you may have already mentioned it, would that PSAT particularly be offered to eighth and ninth graders? As we talk about raising expectations, I know they're offering algebra now in the eighth grade in some schools for our high-performance students. Would that be an offering? Or has that been considered as an offering at that grade level, or is it only for high school tenth graders on up?
So at this time, we, we've been paying for 10th-grade students to take PSAT and SAT, and for 11th and 12th grade, and SAT, I'm sorry, to take the PSAT, SAT is only for 11th and 12th grade. That's what we've been doing. We can certainly talk to high school principals. This conversation goes on between, you know, this, you know, the system leadership and principals all the time about, you know, their thoughts on it, but this is kind of what the district has been doing, and I don't anticipate that we're gonna change it this coming school year.
Okay. And just one other question, as we talk about expansion, and I'm talking specific to the performing arts programs, I see the, the new allocation, future allocation, I'm just assuming that's for the new Hyatt Field. So my question is about enhancing student support for the current and existing performing arts programs, particularly Sootland High School, Floyd Academy, Thomas Pullen. Are those schools that currently have programs gonna also have some type of additional support at all?
I don't, we haven't budgeted in this budget, but I'm having conversations with them. I've, I've met with the coordinators of the program at Sootland and at Northwestern High School, for example, the PPA programs. I haven't been to, to Pullen yet, but, but plan to do that, and have been talking also to some teachers from the various programs. So I have a small group of dance teachers, for example, that I've been meeting with, which is what resulted in the request in this budget for a central office dance, you know, coordinator and the integrated arts specialist. But in terms of, you know, enhancements for those schools, they're not in this budget other than the dance and the support of integrated arts. But I'm talking with them about what their needs are.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of that we may be able to do out of existing funds, you know, the realignment of things.
Yes.
But, but I'm having the conversations with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to round two. We have Mr. Burrows.
I'll be very quick. I just wanted to first recognize the best middle school principal in Prince George's County. Mr. Coleman is here. You know, expert, Oxon Hill Middle School, I mean, has really changed the school culture there, it's a college-going environment. I appreciate all your work, you know, we all do. Dr. Maxwell, this goes back to the parent and family and community focus that we're, yeah, resources that, that we're working on. You know, when I look at the amount of money that's being placed in the Family Community Resource Office, the Ombudsman's Office, and the Constituent Service Office, you know, it's a lot of money that could be used in, in many places. I do see it a value in where you currently have it. But what I will say is that, you know, the board has had some concerns around, you know, the constituent service office effectiveness, and, you know, I would hate for us to, you know, allocate this money to, towards, you know, increasing this current operation when it's not completely impactful as, as we had envisioned. So I wanted to, you know, ask if you would be open to having the community and parent engagement committee on the board work with your staff that's really creating the vision, the scope for this office, and if we can work together on that, to ensure that we're all seeing eye to eye and, you know, that there is, you know, clear vision, clear goals, and we're all, we all have the same expectations for, for the office.
I, I guess I wasn't clear enough in my last response, that I look forward to a continued collaboration with the board to make sure that we are getting to our, the place we both want to be.
No, thank you.
All right. Colleagues, seeing no other comments, that concludes our budget work session. We're going to take a brief break and start our, our public hearing right at seven o'clock. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.